Hello everybody and welcome back to another Moon Colony livestream. Happy Wednesday, halfway through the week already. It's flying by, but I hope you're having a good one. We've got Leonie with us here again today. Hi Leonie.
Hello.
How are you?
How are you guys? Very good?
Very nice, very nice. So today we're gonna be doing something that we've done before. We've done once before. I also put it out as a weekly warm-up a couple of weeks ago on the Discord as well, for those of you who take part in that. But we're gonna be taking a look at some movie frames today.
Yeah.
I recognized like one or two of the movies.
Yeah, there are three movies, so if you recognize two, it's already...
Yeah, yeah. But if you wanna have a go at guessing in the chat, then go ahead. But we have put these on the Discord for you as well in the streaming channel. So you can go in there, take a look and do some studies of your own if you like. But... Ah, yes, so these are from filmgrab.com, which Leonie has kindly just sent me, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I'll drop it in the chat for you guys. There you go. Jaden's still here, nice to see you, nice to see you still around. Yes, I'm still here. My last day at Moon Colony is the 28th of February.
No, Jaden.
It's okay, it's okay. As far as I'm aware, there'll still be streams here and there, once I'm gone, but we'll make the most of it. I think next week or the week after will be the last one from me, but don't worry. I'll still be around, I'll still be around. I'll be in the server still even when I'm not working, so...
I'll have to do it all with the Jaden brush today.
Perfect, yeah. Oh god, it's so much scarier when it's like... When it's flipped, yeah. There we go, nice. But yeah, don't worry, I'll still be around here in our hearts, oh lord. Jaden brush for free. Yeah, very nice. But no, thank you guys. I'll say more like when it gets to my last stream, but it has been a really nice time streaming with you guys. It's nice to see the regular faces that come into.
Yeah, I don't know if this is our last stream together, so I'm feeling nostalgic or whatever, like...
Oh, yeah, thanks man. But yeah, we'll figure something out. I'll do something, we can maybe do like a paint together on my final week or something like that. Join Leonie's rock band. Yeah, I can play the triangle. I'll be in the corner.
I got a new guitar for you, Jaden.
For me? Oh my god, wow, nice. That's really cool. I love the texture on the body.
Yeah, there's the bird in lace.
Oh yeah. That's really cool. Well, now he's broken it, he's broken it already. That's nice. I'm not even gonna ask how much that cost.
Yes.
Yeah.
How much that cost, yes.
Yes. But yeah, enough sadness. Let's get into it, let's get into doing some artwork. So... Yeah, Leonie, I'll let you sort of take it away. Which one are you thinking to start with?
Okay, so yeah, before I choose one, I will say like how I approached doing this type of study and like why did I pick this? So yeah, every time I want to do some quick study on composition and color, like even values and stuff, I like doing movie frames because they are very deliberate in the way they compose the scene and like which elements to highlight and which elements to like leave out of focus and things like that. Because it's like in a movie, you're trying to tell a story. And like as you can see on these frames, you can see that I I gravitate towards portraits in general. That's what I like to paint, so that's why I chose this. And like if I go one by one, this first row of like these five frames are from the latest Alien movie, I think.
Nice.
Yeah, and like when I choose this, I'm not choosing like because of the movie or anything. For example, I haven't watched this, just the Godzilla one, that's the only one that I watched. The one in the middle, for example, I don't even know what this movie is about. It's more about the compositions and colors. So yeah. If I go one by one, the first frame, I liked it because of the underlight and the contrast between these cool looking shadows and like this warm part in the middle. But also like one thing that is already like something that I will do in every type of study like this is try to realize that this blue-ish colored the background is actually pretty gray. You know, and like so it's a good study to understand how to treat saturation in a good way, you know? So yeah, this is more about the light, lighting shadows, like this is very interesting. This one also, I think it's about the shapes of light and shadow that are very, very nice. So like this this separation of light and shadow groups, you know?
Yeah.
With the Jaden face.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I totally forgot that you still had that on.
Yeah, so it's like, I, this is very cool. Also, one thing that I like a lot about this frame is that you can see how the light coming from this side has a little bit of falloff because you can see like how bright, how much brighter the girl's face is compared to this guy. If you have like a third character here, it will be even darker. So it's like the light has like a very nice falloff to it. And also there's a lot of interesting highlights
Yeah.
that we can like observe, so I like that. The colors are very pleasing also. This one is very dramatic.
Yeah.
Especially, I like this eye for some reason, like the way the light is shining on it.
Yeah.
So it would be a nice study to do.
It's got that like typical... Oh, sorry, I was gonna say that eye has got that typical like too light gleam.
Yeah, yeah.
Top and bottom, yeah.
Cool one and a warm one on the bottom. And also it's interesting to know, like to observe how the silhouette get lost in the background. So it's like, it's also a good example on how you don't need to like outline everything, you know, sometimes you can let the elements blend into the background, you know? This one is very interesting because like the way the silhouette is is done against this like fog and stuff, like this is very tense in a way.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's a simple composition, but like from all that I picked, this like is the most different. The other ones are like mostly close up to the face. But something about this grabbed my attention. It's like very simple, but it's very effective also. This one is one of my favorites because of the light and shadow interactions, like how well grouped are the shadow side and the light side. So I think this is like a very strong candidate for me to pick. And like I think it's interesting to do from beginning to end in this stream, you know?
Yeah.
These other movies called Blue Jean, I think. And I like the color choices in this very much. And I picked like four frames of the same character. Because like even if I would do like all four frames like back to back, you can see how much the light situation can affect the local colors a lot. So for example, of course, it is pretty obvious if you pick this color from her skin, it's like totally different color from this, right?
Yeah.
But like it's the same person, you know? So it's like, okay, that's one reminder that, okay, there is no such thing as color of the skin or color of the bark of the tree or whatever. It always depends on the light situation.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So always think about that when you're painting. So this example is very, very cool. Like all of these frames are very interesting. Even if I remove color and see only black and white, they are very interesting still. Like even if we have like very low contrast, you can see the like these interesting light shapes forming here, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know. It's very pretty. And some frames from Godzilla.
Hell yeah.
These, yeah, this movie is very cool. All of these have like very distinct light and shadow shapes. I like those a lot. Like having these shapes help to help us to draw.
Yeah.
And like be more effective, like grouping stuff. So like I could, for example, if I was doing this group, all of this shadow planes into one value, for example, and you would still understand what is this about, you know, like if I do this.
Yeah.
So like in terms of exercise, like it's a very good reference for exercises like this. Okay? And yeah, I want to highlight this last shot because it's very interesting because of the reflection, like the interaction between the character and the reflection of Godzilla. And one thing that is pretty interesting about this is understanding how reflections work in a situation like this. For example, you can see that the dark values of the inside of the train are almost lost. They like, the sky here like overtakes the dark values of the inside of the train. So like you can't basically just see the face and like a little bit of the clothing. And like this edge of her head is completely lost. So like it's a pretty interesting study also to do. So yeah. I will do this one because it's very interesting. I like the simplicity of it. And also there's a bunch of elements for us to pay attention to. So I will do this real quick.
Sure thing.
One thing that I do, I like to try to have the frame as close as the original in terms of proportions. So like when I'm looking at my reference, I'm not like too off in terms of proportions. So like this is, this frame is pretty wide. It's matching the aspect ratio of the original.
Yeah. Just for those who might not have been here at the start of the stream, you can find all of these screenshots on our Discord. We got them from, we got them from filmgrab.com as well. So if you wanna go and find your own, then go ahead. But I'd love to see what studies you guys do or how you guys get on if you choose to join us in this. You can post that in our Discord. We have a study room, so you can just drop it in there. But yeah, so Leonie, yeah, you're starting off just sort of kind of blocking the room by the looks of it.
Yeah, I'm trying to get a feel for the perspective first. So it's like we have this corner of a room like this, right?
Yeah.
So I'm, I start sketching in a very loose way what I think the proportions are. I try to compare like to the edges of the the frame. So like that's why having like very good approximation on how the the frame is, it will help me a lot. For example, I know that this door is completely wrong. If you see that, like the door forms a triangle like this.
Yeah.
It doesn't go all the way to the bottom, so like trying to see how this compare like and how much it will like go inside the frame, it will help me to make sure that it looks correct at the end. When you do studies like this, you can try to copy as close as possible to the reference. Or not, maybe you just want to like copy only the colors and values, but the drawing itself, you can be more like expressive with it, you know?
Yeah.
Sometimes I do that. So I will not try to match one to one things, like I'm, I'm not worried all that much. I think it's more, this time will be more about the feel of the scene.
Yeah.
And like matching the vibe of the image and the general light and shadow, more than like doing something that you cannot tell which is the frame, which is the copy, you know? uh, doing something that you cannot tell which is the frame, which is the copy, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I think it's similar to what we did last time. I think, uh, we, we did, I think, three different, three different frames last time, which I don't know how we managed that in like two hours, but we did it. Um...
Yeah, yeah. It's like, when, when I do multiple, I, I try to go like faster and like be more decisive with stuff, like, don't pull around too much. But with this, I want to do just one from beginning to end.
Yeah.
So I can try to push as far as I can. Uh, to see like how much can we do in like one hour and forty minutes?
Yeah. No, that's, that's totally fair. Um, let me take a look at the chat and see who we've got in here. Um, hi Hatake, hi Kathy, uh, hey Virat, Bobby D, uh, Jasmine was here, hi Jasmine. Uh, Lemon Emlyn is here too, Margot. Uh, Statsbitz, hello. Boo, uh, Vivi Weihara, hello. Uh, and Lise Baron, nice to see you as well. I hope you're all doing good. And then YouTube, we've got Vin. Welcome, welcome. Uh, I hope everyone's doing great. I hope you're doing great.
Uh, the biggest challenge when doing this first blocking is for me is always figuring out this size of stuff. Like one thing that I always do wrong is the head size. I usually do it too big.
Yeah.
Uh, but this time, like I started with the head, then I like was drawing the neck and the body and said, oh, oh. But like the shoulders are like pretty close to the bottom corner in the original frame, like, so how far I was. So like I just scaled up everything. So, yeah. One thing that you can do also, like to kind of do, uh, like a cheap trick, is trying to match the the position like this. So for example, I can do this. And try to put my frame, my reference with the same, uh, size like this.
Yeah.
You know, so you can kinda, uh, imagine a line going through it to see, for example, okay, the head will go like this and then the chin go like this, you know? So you can start matching the sizes a little bit better. Uh, this is like, you can say that this is a a cheat, but at the same time, this is something that artists do for, I don't know, five hundred years or whatever.
Yeah.
It's fine, you know?
As, I was gonna say, that reminds me of like when, when I was a kid and you used to get those like activity coloring books or whatever. And it would be like, oh, we've given you half of, uh, half of a drawing of like somebody's head. You have to draw the other half, but they've like made it a grid. Um... It's just, it's kind of like that. I was terrible with that.
Oh, the grid technique is a very useful one. Like even someone that cannot draw, if they pay attention only to the grid and say, okay, in this, uh, like square, you have this, for example. And the next square, you have this, you know? And you go like this and at the end, you can have something
Yeah.
drawn, you know?
Yeah.
And like, this is almost like we actually paint when we look at reference. For example, when I, uh, looking at the reference, I pay attention to, for example, this shape. And trying to see how big is this shape, for example. This angle is a little bit more steep than I drawn here.
Yeah.
You know, so it's like, okay, I need to find this. So like the arm goes uh, way like more like this, you know?
Yeah.
So yeah, that's the, the trick of it. Trying to, uh, see the negative space also as a tool.
Yeah. Uh, Kathy said, uh, that their grandpa used to do that with oil paintings. He had a small photo and did the same trick to translate that to a big oil paint canvas. Yeah. Yeah. I remember we-
Yeah, and like, even like in the Renaissance, people had like this dark rooms with a very tiny hole at the wall, like the, the image would project on a wall and they, they can trace on top, you know?
Yeah.
It's, okay, everything is, is, is fine, you know? Like you can have your, your tricks.
Yeah, for sure. That's the thing. I mean, I, I think it was, uh, there was a stream we did with Alex Heath. I can't remember which one it was, but he was saying that when he, uh, when he went to an atelier, that he would have, that he would get given like a bit of string or something and he'd have to hold the string up to get like the right proportions of this, uh, bust that was at the other cut, like other side of the room. And then he'd be like, oh, okay, so if on this string, it's about that big, so then I move it over to the canvas and it would be about the same, like, there's loads of tricks that, that you can do.
Yeah.
And that doesn't, that doesn't mean that you're cheating.
Yeah, it means you're cheating, but it's fine.
Yeah, yeah. It's an acceptable way to cheat. Hi, Red Pinno.
I would say that espe- especially like in a work, uh, situation, like everything is on the table, like in terms of technique. Do whatever you can do to make uh, things faster and like with more quality, you know? Of course, like you cannot plagiarize another course of work or like doing something that would, uh, put you to trouble. But in general, like, you can use whatever tricks you have on your sleeve. For example, one thing that I do a lot is taking pictures of myself to figure out like uh, proportions or perspective or whatever I need, you know? Oh, it's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, a lot of artists end up doing that anyway, don't they? Oh, I don't have the right, I don't have the right reference, so I'll just do it myself.
Yeah. Yeah, it's way easier than sometimes when you have to find, for example, perfect hand pose. Like if you try to search for it, you can take a very long time before you find exactly what you want.
Yeah.
So one, one good thing for an artist to have is one of those like small LEDs that you can even change colors. So you can take pictures with uh, colors in the light, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
Okay, so I have like a pretty rough, uh, drawing here, so let me try to make a proper drawing on top on a new layer. Remember, guys, that all of this will be done with the Jaden brush, okay? He's here with us.
Are you still, are you still using the Jaden brush? Is that what you've been using?
Yeah. Of course.
Insane. I'm gonna need to, I'm gonna need to get that off of you. You'll have to send it, you'll have to send me the Jaden brush after this.
Yeah, actually, yeah, that's, that's the status part of you not being on the stream. It's like, okay, I cannot use the Jaden brush. This is my secret weapon. I need my brush.
You can still use the Jaden brush. I give you full permission to use the Jaden brush whenever you want. Hey Melissa.
Thanks.
Uh, Nomus was just, Nomus just said the legendary brush, yeah. I'm scared what would happen if the Jaden brush went, went public. I, I don't know. I think I would be very con- well, I would be very concerned if the public got a hold of my face as a brush.
But like, the thing about that is that anybody can do anybody's face.
It's so easy, yeah. I don't know.
Get whatever image you want and go to edit and like save as brush and that's it, you know?
Yeah, that is true. That is true. There's just, I don't know. There's something m- more concerning um, about it already being made and them, then getting their hands on it. Uh, Lemon says, is that a door? Is that a vase? No, it's a teeny titan, Jaden, it's a teeny tiny Jaden army. Uh, hey, idle PSD, uh, you're a little late. Hope you didn't miss too much. Nah, you didn't miss much. We've barely even started.
Just blocking in the the image.
Yeah. Yeah, we're focusing more on, uh, the light and shadows and the values stuff today, right?
Yeah. Uh, I will do like a, a line work, but I will not use too much of it. It's just a guide for me to
Yeah.
Know like how to paint some stuff.
Yeah. Uh, you want the, you want, you want the Jaden brush to be the new sta- the new standard brush in Photoshop? Hey man, if, uh, if they wanna, if they wanna hit me up and offer me, offer me some, some money for that, I'm down.
Yeah, Jaden, how, how much would you want? So your face is the default Photoshop brush. Would be ne- uh, like enough for you, you know?
I don't know, man. Like Adobe, Adobe has quite a lot of money. I reckon I could get quite a, quite a lot.
You could say, I want like w- one percent of each
Of each.
monthly payment.
Yeah, yeah. I would never have to work ever again. Yeah. I'd be like, hey, I want, I want twenty-five percent of everybody's monthly subscription.
Okay, Jaden, I think that's a little bit too much.
Twenty-five? Nah, nah. I know what I'm worth. I know what I'm worth. Uh, I need my Jaden brush and a USB drive in a very fancy chest in my treasure room? No, 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 no.
One thing about doing this is that like when you approach this with lines, uh, and then you go and put values, you can see how off you were with your lines.
Yeah.
Usually, you know? Because one thing is trying to convey, for example, the size of the forehead, for example, with lines. And then I will do like the hairline and then the, the eyebrows or something. But when you put values and you see like just a block of color, like you can perceive better the, the actual proportions of stuff, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, I think because like most of us start drawing with lines before we, we go for shapes, you know? Uh, you tend to stylize too much, you know, with the lines compared to shapes, uh, of like blocks of value, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say like you can already tell that you have like, you've stylized it a lot more. Um, with the, with the lineup. Uh, hey Daniela, welcome to the stream. Uh, they said, I actually just started a study with, uh, with the shapes and blobs of color. Oh, nice, here we go.
Yeah, it, it's, it's very cool doing like that also.
Yeah.
This is a good like this, uh, film, uh, frame study is a good way of testing new approaches also.
Yeah.
So, yeah, sometimes you, you just go straight to to colors or values, like just skip lines altogether, you know?
Mm-hmm. That's the thing, you can you can do a lot with, uh, studying film frames, cause you can like well, you can study pretty much anything, composition, values, lights, light, light, shadows.
Yeah, and in general, when you do studies, it's good if you have a clear go- goal, what you're trying to do, you know?
Yeah.
Of course, like even if your goal is, is doing something like, okay, I will copy this as close as possible, one-to-one with the reference. Okay, this is a goal that you can try to do. But if this seems too like stressful or too complicated, you can go simpler. So for example, I just want to find the perspective. Okay, you can do just that. Or I want to find the, the general shapes in the composition. Okay, this is already good enough, you know?
Yeah.
You can limit, uh, for example, the amount of, uh, values you can use. Try to do this with two values or three values, you know?
Yeah.
So, uh, there's a lot of stuff you can do with this. So far now, it's all about twenty minutes of me doing this line.
Yeah.
And I tend to first do things with lines because I think that it helps me figure out some stuff that if I, uh, jump straight to values, for example, I'd be kind of lost. For example, uh, proportions of the shapes or perspective, things like that are a little tricky or even like the gesture of the character. It's something that is challenging for me to do without, uh, lines, you know?
Yeah. It's funny, you, you said that, you started saying that just as Daniela asked why you were starting with lines instead of, uh, jumping straight in on shapes. I don't know if you saw that question when you started speaking, but as soon as you started talking. Yeah, as soon as you started talking, that got answered, or that got asked, so.
Yeah, it's like, when you're doing, uh, painting or drawing, it's like you're juggling a bunch of decisions, right?
Yeah.
So uh, one thing that I learned with experience is that if I try to juggle too many things at the same time, I get lost and get frustrated and like the final result is something that is not good enough for me. I, I tend to stress too much about it, you know?
Yeah.
So one thing that I do uh, to make my life easier is I separate my decisions into smaller chunks. So, yeah, starting with lines, I can only think about the general composition and perspective, things like that, before I think about values and shapes and things like that, like lighting, shadow. So it's like, it's easier for me to separate like that.
Yeah.
But like, uh, also there's the, it, it's, it's not like I, I worry all that much about streaming, but because we are streaming, I want to have the best result I can at the end. So I'm using the, the the technique that I'm most comfortable with, you know, for the stream. So I don't make a fool of myself at the end, you know?
Leoni, you don't, uh, you don't have to, you don't have to pretend. We, we all know how much of a fool you are. It's all good. Daniela says one cool thing about being hypermyopic is that I only need to take off my glasses to see the big shapes.
True. Yeah, yeah, like, uh, most people just need to squint to, to see the, the bigger shapes.
Yeah.
But like if we're have poor vision, you don't need to do that.
Yeah.
So one thing that I do sometimes, for example, it's also like a trick that you can do is duplicate your reference. And this one I will blur.
Oh, okay.
So I'll go the filter gallery and go, I do this.
Actually, taking off your glasses is a good idea. I, I, I just thought about like, just realized I could try it.
For example, when you're looking at the, the reference, uh, like we tend to, get to caught up on details, for example. Oh, I know that there's an eye and the eye have like, eyelashes and the white part and the iris.
Yeah.
So it's like, one thing that we tend to do is, okay, I know that this exists, so I need to, paint that on my image, but like if you do like that, it's okay, the eye is gone, you know?
Yeah.
Don't worry about drawing the eye.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you can see like how much I improved from this first uh, sketch to the second one. Uh, it's a little closer to the reference now, so I will use this as my base. So what I'll do now is I'll just separate some, shapes. Actually, one thing that will be better is if I just do this, put the reference on top. I think it's more like, space efficient.
It feels weird having the, feels weird having the reference be on, on the top. It's so used to like, like, it's so used to having it to the side.
Yeah. Okay, so, let's do some, groups. So I will just group, this, hand, let's see. Just try to match the position as best as I can.
What's going on? Everybody panic?
Come on Photoshop.
Photoshop also doesn't like having the reference on the top.
No.
What is, what is happening?
I'm just trying to match the position.
Oh, okay.
The reference with the, the bottom, but, through it.
It's not happening. Yeah, it's not having it.
Okay, now it's your guys' favorite part, which is lassoing.
Lassoing everything, yeah.
Okay, so when I do this, I put whatever color, doesn't matter. So I can separate by local colors, or I could separate by lighting shadow, doesn't matter. Uh, so I, I think I'm gonna do lighting shadow, uh, because it's what I want to study on this, so, I'll just separate the character,
Sure.
Into a big shape. Because like the, the other approach, which is doing local colors, it's what usually, like we usually do when drawing, right? Okay, the character has like the skin and the hair and the clothing and things like that. Okay, this is too like commonplace, so let's do the opposite. You can see on these streams how I changed my mind on this spot also.
I was, I was too busy thinking like, every time, an artist does like a really big object, like lassoing like a big object. I'm just like, man, one mistake and you have to re-lasu that whole thing. And it just gives me, it just gives me anxiety for some reason. Like it stresses me out and I'm not even the one doing it. Uh, Lisa says, pro tip, I found out when your reference is only one image, not a mon- like not a collage or montage like this. Uh, if you press Ctrl R two times to activate and deactivate the rulers, it centers the image in the view. Ah.
Oh, nice.
That's, that's good to know.
Yeah, my problem is that like, is a, like a big canvas of a lot of images.
Yeah. What do you mean re-lasu? There's shift and alt, you can correct anything. Wait, you can undo. Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, that is true.
A Jaden brush. Okay, so here, it's gonna do the.
Yeah, I kind of forgot that, I kind of forgot that you could just un, like, un-lasu parts.
Okay, Jaden. Okay, is this correct?
Yes.
It is. Wait a second.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the tips. Thanks for the tip Lisa. If anyone else has any like cool, cool tips for, for Photoshop, I'd love to hear them. Stuff like that is, is interesting. What events are you guys doing this year? I'm actually not sure. Um, I'm really not sure what, what we're going to this year. I know we're, we're very, very busy. Uh, we're very busy in the studio, so. Hopefully, hopefully we can make it to, hopefully we can make it to some stuff.
Yeah, and the thing about that is, okay, I might have heard something about it, but I don't know if I, can say anything. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll post some, we'll post some stuff if we are going anywhere.
I don't know.
But.
I changed the brush for her.
No! Oh, it's ruined, it's ruined. End this, we're ending the stream now, it's over.
Yeah, I changed the brush to, to the, like, the airbrush thing at the, the background.
Shame on you, shame on you.
Ah, Jaden, I'm a fraud. Only with your face.
Yeah.
With only your face.
You're a fraud, a scoundrel and a fiend. But Daniela, are you planning on going to any events this year? Did you go to any last year? Uh, Leonie talking about not going into details and then proceeding to paint the tiny shadows between the fingers. He was hoping no one would notice.
Okay, guys. I'm gonna just do this. I hope you're happy.
Nah, see now the problem is now you've gone into detail on the, on like, one thing, you have to go into detail on everything else.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident with the time.
Yeah.
I have like one hour.
Yeah, we've, we've still got just over an hour, so.
It will be fine, guys.
I believe in you.
Thanks, Jaden.
You're welcome.
I believe I can fly.
I'm doing my own, uh, I'm doing my own value checks. I've taken my glasses off, so it's all blurry.
Yeah, I, it's, uh, when I'm doing this, like the way I'm doing it right now, it's more about the shape than the actual value.
Yeah.
It's like, of course, the value of the character is not full white. Right? So it's like mostly about figuring out the, lighting shadow shapes as close as I can. And then I'm gonna fix the values because I can just, do this, right?
Yeah. Uh, Daniela says, it's okay Leonie, I'm just about done with my break and will stop watching this imposter study. Oh.
No.
Don't leave us. You can watch while you work, it's totally fine. Uh, do you have the shapes on separate layers?
Yeah, I'm doing the shadows separate from the, the base. Base. I'm separating the, character into two layers and the background also. Like the background has the light separating on the shadow.
Yeah. Smooth, smooth turn on the AC by the way. Nice, nice job.
Yeah, no one noticed.
Yeah. Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't like a loud bing or anything.
It's hot, Jaden.
Is it hot for you today? What, what, what temperature is it at?
Probably over thirty, I don't know.
Damn. It's currently five, nope, it's just gone down four degrees where I am right now.
Probably where I live, uh, we never had four degrees.
Man, that's, that's crazy. I mean, it's, super common. Super common for it to get below that here. Daniela said, oh, you went to THU last year. It was so fun meeting other weirdos that I have like five events scheduled this year. Blimey.
Whoa.
That's a, that's a lot. Are they all over the place or like just in Europe? That's a lot of, that's a lot of travel. Europe, ah, okay. Yeah, that's good. That's nice.
Yeah, that's probably is a good thing about living in Europe is that you are one flight away from everywhere.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's, it's quite rare that you have to do any transfer, like transfer flights around, like throughout Europe. Although saying that, you can also just fly straight to the States or like straight to, um, straight to like a lot of Asian countries as well, honestly.
Yeah, here, when I want to fly to somewhere that is not Sao Paulo or Brasilia, which is the capital, I need to, like, do, like a,
A transfer.
Take two flights.
Yeah.
But the, but it's more about, the, the problem is more about the, the airport from my city.
Oh, really?
Actual, like, size of the country, like, because, like, there's nothing in the way that like could stop me from going from one corner to the other. It's more about, okay, the, my, the airport, the local airport only goes to Sao Paulo and Brazil.
Ah, okay. Yeah. My, my, um, my local airport in the UK has recently, like within the last year or two, actually started doing a lot more flights to like the rest of Europe. It used to just do kind of nearby countries, like it'd fly you over to like the Netherlands or, like Germany or France, but now it's really starting to expand. They're doing flights out to like Greece or, somewhere like the Spanish, uh, Canary Islands and stuff like that.
Cool.
Yeah. You're still waiting on Concert 101 dates? You really wanna go back to the UK? Oh, yeah, Concert 101 was really fun last year. I had a, I had a nice time. Super busy.
I don't think so. I was not there, Jaden.
Yeah, I think I preferred last year to the, to the year before, um. Nah, it would have been nice if, it'd been nice if you were there last year, but, unfortunately. Yeah, that sucks, sucks to be you, I guess. Sucks to suck, um. But yeah, if you can make it to Concert 101 again, go for it. Really go for it. Lisa says, my, my favorite random useful tip I recently learned is Ctrl, Shift and Y when you're in the color selector grays out all the color ranges, that are unprintable. So you can work in RGB and still check your colors with the color picker in case you need to convert to CMYK, without your painting shifting. Oh, that's a cool one too.
CMYK is cursed.
It, it is, it is a bit cursed, but that's what you, that's what you need to, check for if you're printing stuff out, right? So.
No, never print anything.
Don't make, don't make art books. Don't sell prints.
No.
Don't do stickers. It's not worth it. You heard it here first.
Yeah, my, all my favorite colors are not printable.
All my favorite colors are impossible to get in real, in real life.
Every time I paint something and I want to check, the, the print version, it like my colors are dead. Especially like blues and purples, like they disappear.
That's because you weren't painting in CMYK, the superior, the superior color format.
No. I refuse.
One day I really wanna meet, I really wanna meet the guy, um, or, or, or woman, like I really wanna meet the person who is just like, no. I, I choose my colors exclusively using like hex codes. But I don't have a color picker. I just know every hex code. Cause there's gotta be someone.
Graphic design, maybe?
Yeah, there, there's gotta be someone out there who knows, who knows, at least generally, like.
Yeah. Okay, so let's try to apply some col- colores.
Warm it up.
Yeah, just a general uh, value, good enough for now. The shadow, I think I'm gonna put this in multiply. And find like a, what did I do? What? Wait a second. If I just do this. Okay, it's better, so I'll keep like, more yellowish. So yeah, now I'm gonna do the local color thing. So, yeah, now I'm gonna do the local color thing. Just to see what we get.
Uh.
Okay, it's, the skin is very yellowish. Yeah, okay, this is good enough. Let's go for the call the, oh.
Oh.
Wrong brush.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Go back to the shadows.
Uh, is the only streaming in windowed mode other windows we're not seeing? Yeah, it's just his, it's just his layers and his brushes, really.
Yeah, my canvas is usually pretty, like, empty. I don't like having a bunch of floating rooms. For example, I don't have color, uh, swatches or anything. I just have layers and brushes.
Yeah.
That's it. Nothing more.
He doesn't wanna show you the rest, cause, oh, yeah, Inácio, Inácio beat me to the joke. He said, "This guy's got another window open with the FIFA World Cup on it, like, the FIFA World Cup ninety-eight?" Damn, dude.
No.
That's
Why ninety-eight?
I don't know, dude. That's what Inácio said. Uh, what I mean is like adjustment windows, like gradient maps, filter or hue adjustments. No, I don't, you weren't doing any of that.
No, I don't use any.
No.
Oh, it's like, yeah, when I press, for example, Ctrl U and I'm doing that, it's like, okay, this adjustment layer.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know why, like, when I stream, like, share my Photoshop screen, it doesn't let me show everything.
Yeah. Supposedly any other thing you could do is like share your whole desktop, but then if you have
Yeah, I only have one monitor.
Yeah, if you have anything else open, then it's, uh.
Okay, yeah, you can see that this process is pretty, like, efficient in a way.
Hmm.
On having something that, uh, is somewhat like the, the reference, you know?
Yeah.
But of course, I will, like, do a bunch of painting on top, like this. I would consider this like the preliminary phase of the painting, you know? Like, if I don't get, uh, the perfect values or colors, it's fine because I have things in separate layers. Uh, I can just tweak it. So like, I'll do my best to find the the general feeling of the colors, like, you can see how stupid it looks without the the, the light and shadow part.
He's got green hair.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so let me start adjusting the color temperatures of the shadow.
Daniela says, "One monitor only." Jaden, why are you not paying Leoni enough for more monitors? Leoni gets paid plenty. Leoni could have more monitors. He just decided against it. He decided, cause we were talking about this before the stream started. He had two. He gave one to his wife. And now he just had, he has no room for a second one because he bought a massive tablet.
Yeah, I just bought the biggest Cintiq
Yeah.
ever created.
Yeah.
No, it's not the biggest, but it's like a pretty big one. It's a twenty-seven each.
He has the world's largest, uh, he has the world's
You can stop there.
largest tablet. World's largest tablet. Gaslighting, I wasn't gaslighting anybody. I have never gaslit anybody in my entire life. That may in of itself be gaslighting, um.
Okay, so let's start making the
There's a nice
values a little bit closer to the reference, so darken the background.
There's a comment from, uh, Hideki in the YouTube chat that says, um, "This is great, Leoni. Uh, hello from Sao Paulo and you're enormous, uh, you're an enormous inspiration."
Hey, thank you, man. How, uh, who is him? Like, what is his name?
Uh, Hideki.
Hideki.
Uh, they said it in Portuguese, so I had to Google translate it, so. Cause
Annoys.
Uh, Jaden gaslit me yesterday, but it was heartwarming, so I embraced it. What did I do yesterday? Clearly I do this so often, I just don't even remember it anymore.
Yeah, Jaden, I'm not feeling in the mood anymore to make fun of you.
Well, because I'm, because I'm leaving.
Yeah.
It's okay. You, you're still allowed. You have another, like, I don't know, like, another week and a half as yet. Uh, well, we have the, we have, we have the Earth commenting in our YouTube chat as well. They said, uh, "Are you excited about the new Intuos Pro released today?" I didn't even know there was a new Intuos Pro that was releasing today.
Because you're not pro.
It's cause I'm not a pro. Yeah.
Yeah. Only pros can watch the video.
So I just got flashbanged by my, by, by this website. It's just, um.
I want dark mode everything, come on.
I have dark mode everything. It's just this website just flashed white when it loaded. Um, cause I have a, I have a Google Chrome plugin called Dark Reader, which turns every website dark mode and it's, oh, it's beautiful.
Yeah, you, you, you sent me this, but the problem is that it like messes up some colors, it's like
It can do, yeah.
Proper dark mode.
No, for, for most websites, it works fine. But I can under, yeah, if like you need to check exact colors, then yeah, it can be a bit weird. Um. Uh, I want Pinterest in dark mode. Does Pinterest not have a dark mode?
Does Gmail have a proper dark mode? Because
We're just going through websites and asking if they have dark mode on them.
Come on, because like, the, the worst for me, like, the only website that I use daily that doesn't have like a proper dark mode is Gmail? Or I'm just stupid.
Um.
One.
I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look right now. Cause I think, I think it does.
Go, like, the, yeah, the dark mode on Gmail, like, doesn't darken everything. For example, if you go to the Google Chat thing, like, the window with the chat is white, you know, like, the background is black, but
Yeah.
window is white, so it's very annoying. I hate it.
Yeah, no, I, I don't, I don't think it does. Although my, my Google Chat one is fine, but then I have the external app for the Google Chat.
Hmm.
That's crazy.
Okay, Jaden, do you allow me having a little bit more brushes?
No.
Okay, so I'll just go back to the Jaden.
No, no, if you
I was waiting for you to say that.
Yeah, if you want another brush, you can, you can use another brush.
No, I already used it by mistake. I was, like, not, uh, totally uh, paying attention, so I just used a couple brushes that is not your face.
Um. Let me see, "I can't with the white screen, it burns my eyes. Yahoo Mail, please add dark mode." You, you still use Yahoo Mail? It's crazy. At least the mobile Pinterest has dark mode. Okay, yeah, I thought, I thought at least one of them, I didn't know if the website did or not.
Yeah, Pinterest is dying.
Yeah.
Which is sad.
Yeah, I tried to use Pinterest the other day and just got way too much, like, way too much AI. I was like, okay, well, I guess I'm done here. Facebook is coming back. Facebook is never coming, Facebook is definitely not coming back. Um, "You'd love to ask Leoni a bit on his approach to rendering metal?" Yeah, fire, fire away. We'll do what we can.
Uh, rendering metal is, uh, more about painting the reflections of the environment and the highlights, like, the reflections of the light source.
Yeah.
So, yeah, metal in general, it will look more like metal if you have, like, very, uh, contrasted, like, shifts between, like, light and shadow.
Yeah.
So you can have like a pretty bright spot that is the, uh, reflection of the light source. And close to it, you have like a very dark spot, which is the reflection of a dark, uh, element of the background, you know, so it's like, you can have a bunch of contrasts. So for example, if I just do this, okay, I have a bright spot, a dark spot, and then maybe a bright spot at the other side. Okay, this kinda looks like metal, you know? Especially like from a distance.
Hmm. Uh, I'm gonna put a link in the chat, uh, to the material study that we did one whole year ago now.
A million years ago.
A million years ago, back when I had hair. And it's, uh, it's a link to a material study that, that Leoni did for metal. Um.
I think that's the, the problem, Jaden.
It's cause I shaved all my hair off.
Your hair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Like, you have like a, a quota of, like, bald people in the in the company, like, you're exceeding it, you know?
How many do we, how many do we have? I can think of three, me myself included.
I don't know. How many do we have?
Uh, Arthur, Rin shaved her head. Me, that's the only three I can think of that are, that are bald.
Yeah, you can only have two, you know?
Ah, ah, that was where I went wrong. They didn't tell me that. They didn't tell me that before I did it.
Yeah, you, you did not, uh, read your contract pretty well.
Yeah, I didn't read my contract. It said you can't be bald.
True, yeah.
Uh, oh, hey, Alex. Alex says, "Ah, it's my favorite Brazilian, man." Uh, that's Alexandrov.
Hello. Yeah, Alex Alexandrov is my favorite Brazilian.
Uh, let me see, there's a few other comments on here. Uh, Lemon Emlyn says, "Can I ask if you have considered, uh, any other brands apart from Wacom before buying? I know there are other brands that have pretty good reviews on paper, but I was wondering why many artists still choose Cintiq."
I tried only the XP Pen.
Hmm.
Uh, I had one, uh, a couple years ago. But there was one feature that I did not like too much on that tablet, which was the the rotation, the pen tilt thing.
Yeah.
That I can do this. The tilt was kinda weird, so, yeah, that's one thing that I did not like. The, the pen was not as good as the Wacom pen, but the screen was fine.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so that's why I paid. Got back to Wacom. Back when I had a YouTube channel, I, I was always trying to see if brands would send me stuff because I would love to try more tablets.
Yeah.
I did some reviews based on, like, tablets that I got borrowed from friends and stuff, but, like, no one ever noticed me, so.
Oh.
It's fine, like, I, I would, like, give a chance to, for example, XP Pen because they have, uh, like, representation here in Brazil.
Yeah.
But the issue is that I never tested one, so it's like, okay, I would not buy something that I cannot test.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, of course.
And, yeah, that's it. And like, I, I used many Wacom tablets uh, in the past, so it never had, like, issues, so it's, okay, I just go with that.
Yeah.
But I'm sure, like, e- especially nowadays, because, like, many years have passed and, like, we have a bunch of different brands.
Hmm.
I'm sure that there are, uh, a lot of good alternatives, you know?
Uh, let me see, what else was there? Uh, oh, yeah, going back to talking about, about metal. Um, Daniela says, "I was specifically asking, uh, with this study because you have a very flat surface that's not super reflective, yet it still looks metallic." Um.
Oh, yeah.
The wall doesn't have any
The walls.
Yeah, the wall doesn't have any, like, sharp contrast to it.
Yeah, true. Uh, yeah, it's like, uh, this will be more, probably, in this case, will be more about the the, the textures, like, the how the, the material is kinda worn out, like, it's a, like, looks metallic because of that, maybe.
Yeah. Uh, Daniela says, "I've had a hueon for seven plus years and it's workable and good for the price, but there are some annoying oversights." Um, although Alex says that his hueon's great and then he likes it, so. A lot of it, I guess, just cut, does come down to personal preference. And what you can afford as well, obviously.
Yeah, I know that, uh, like, after testing many different tablets and like, this is, the, the one that I'm using right now is the the biggest and most expensive I ever had. And like, the difference between me painting with this and like, with a, like, a fifty-dollar tablet is very minimal.
Yeah.
In terms of quality of the end product, you know? It's not like, oh, this makes me paint like a hundred times better, you know, like, this doesn't happen, so. Uh, one thing, like, if you think that the tablet will make a huge difference, it will not. It's like, it, it can make a, it will make a difference for me. For example, if I jump back and forth between one and the other, I can sense differences, you know?
Yeah.
But like, if you have just one and you get used to it, you can produce, like, very good-looking pieces, you know? And like, you don't need the, the fanciest tablets to do
Yeah.
cool art, you know?
Hmm. I mean, you look at
But I, I know that, I know that this is easy to say, right? Like, when you already have the, the biggest tablet, you say, okay, yeah, you don't need it. I, I, I know that, like, you want to test, maybe for you will make a big difference, you know, but
Yeah.
But in general, it's not a big deal.
Yeah. It's not about, it's not about the size of your tablet, it's about what you do with it. That's what's important.
True.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also about sizes, uh, I like the twen- uh, sixteen inch. I like, I have the twenty-seven right now. The twenty-seven is a little bit too big, for example, for a two-monitor setup. That's why I only have one, because, like, if I had another monitor on my desk, it would be, like, too huge, you know? It's too much.
Yeah. Uh, Daniela says, "They were happy with their hueon for the longest time and then the side button stopped working. I ordered the same one, but the more current version. And now you regret it. It has some annoying parallax, the buttons aren't usable at all, and they got rid of the touch strip. That was my favorite way of adjusting brush size." Um, I agree with Leonie, but the small things can be super disruptive in the streamlined workflow. Yeah, I. A lot of them are adding in dials now, like the, the wheels. Um. I looked up the new Intuos Pro that's coming out and that has, I think, two dials on it at the top. That, that you can spin around.
Uh, the, the most stupid thing about this tablet that I own, it's like, uh, it's this pen holder.
Oh, yeah, I remember you saying, yeah.
It's like, it's a very fancy screen, like has like a bazillion colors, it's very color accurate and. Things like that, but they ship with this crap that you can attach to the corner with like this.
The.
Uh, screw or whatever, I don't know. And like the, the top goes out, but it's, it's kind of like very flimsy.
Hmm.
Uh, and. It's supposed to go like on the side of the screen and you put the pen like this. But the, there is nothing holding the pen, so it like, it will just fall if you put in like in a very. Uh, like ninety degrees angle, like nothing will hold the pen.
I suppose.
So it's very stupid.
I suppose if it screws in, the idea is that you're supposed to screw it in, so it's at like an angle. But even then, should it just probably just get in the way? I don't know.
Yeah, and it, it looks dumb, it, it doesn't look good, it's, it looks cheap compared to the, the.
The rest of the tablet, yeah. Yeah, just, just 3D print a pen holder, it's all good. 3D print like a cool looking pen holder.
Yeah.
Or, or use a coffee cup, whatever works.
You can see how much I, I did in this, like we are wasting time and talking. A bunch of nonsense and it like already looks pretty like. Close to finish, so it's like in twenty minutes, we can get this.
Yeah.
Uh, to this point, so now it's just, okay, now I have time to zoom in and trying to. Uh, match the details a little bit better, you know.
Yeah.
For example, into a corner here. You have some more values.
Uh. When should I switch the tip of my pen? Because I've done it like twice. I mean, before the stream started, Leonie was talking about the tip of. Like the, the tip of his pen, I don't know if you can see it.
Yeah, it's very, I don't know, will be, yeah, but we're not, it's like very sharp already, I need to change it.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what the, what the recommended usage amount of a pen nib is, but.
For me, depends on how hard you press on the screen and if the screen has some texture or not. Because if it has texture.
Yeah.
It will earn, earn out your pen very quick.
Yeah, like the, the paper like ones, I can imagine.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, that's, I, 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 I don't care too much about texture, I, I prefer not having it because. The first Cintiq I got back in two thousand eleven was like very glassy. Like it was just glass, so I got used to draw on top of glass, you know.
Yeah.
So I don't care too much about texture. And actually, it kind of annoys me when I can hear the, this crack.
The scratching, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's very annoying sound for me.
Uh, Lisa says the, the value grouping in the face is very tasty, I have to say. Yeah, it's looking good.
Noise.
Noise. Uh. Yeah, Alex says, uh, Alex said, uh, he agreed with you, it depends on how hard you press. He said, I, I swiped very lightly and have switched my pen tip once in my life. Yeah.
Yeah, me too, it's like, I don't press hard at all. I, I put the pressure curve in a way that with the gentlest touch is already like in the middle waypoint. So I don't have to press too much.
Uh, I have a heavy hand, but I don't, but I really don't see why I should switch it. I mean. If, if it feels good to use, it still works and it's not scratching your screen, then. I guess it's fine.
Maybe there's a, a hole in the middle of the screen, you can see the other.
Yeah, 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 it's just like a massive like ravine that has been dug through the, through the can, through the tablet.
This part is more. Green.
Hmm.
Saturated. I don't know, this exercise is very satisfying.
It's, uh, it's nice to watch as well, like. I think I said it last week. Uh, it must have been last week, but I always find it really satisfying to watch. Uh, to watch people, you know, make, like do stuff that's, that's creative and when you can tell that they're really thinking about it. I don't know why I always just find it so satisfying. It's like when you're watching Bob Ross, right? Like when you ever watched, like, you watch Bob Ross videos and. He's just like super chill, but you can tell that he's like thinking about what he's doing and. It's. Just relaxing. Uh, talking about software, maybe someone can help me with that. My tablet, my monitor have very different brightnesses and contrast settings. Um. I'm starting to think my tablet is way too dark. Now I don't know if all my art is too dark. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is annoying, the. Monitor calibration side of things is kind of. Problem.
Yeah.
But it's like, one thing that I do is I just load a bunch of art from people that I. Really trust their taste.
Yeah.
And I load them in a screen, so I can see everything and I say, okay, uh, let me tweak to make this look good. And then I will paint uh comparing with this, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, I guess there's not much you can really do other than like just brute force your way through it. And just sit there messing around with the settings until it looks good.
Yeah, I, there are probably scientific ways of doing that, but. It's not for me, I just, I just wing it, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Saying that, I don't think I've ever calibrated a monitor in my, in my life, so like. Spend, you spend so much time making it look nice on your monitor and then it gets put onto some. Just default, de- default monitor uh setup.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, as Alex said, it would be, in general, it would be good to have at least a screen you can trust, even if it's on your phone, and then adjust the rest to match it, yeah.
Yeah. So like using the phone is a good idea because most people will see the artwork on their phones. Of course, like we have like a million different phones with different color profiles, but. Like, yeah, you can pick, for example, like a Samsung or iPhone or whatever.
Yeah.
And try to make something that looks good on that screen, probably is like the, the good thing that you can do.
Yeah. Just takes time.
Starting to feel hungry, Jayden.
Yeah, I'm, I'm starting to feel pretty hungry too. Although that's, that's nothing new. I, I, every time I finish a stream for some reason, I'm just like. I just have to like run and grab a snack. Um. Raymond Blast said, nice study, sad Jayden's vibe. No, it's not, it's not a sad vibe. Uh, we've still got, uh, we've still got at least one other stream. Uh, Jayden, at least tell me you guys pay Leonie enough to afford food. Now, unfortunately, we, we force him to spend all of his money on, on monitors. Um.
And guitars.
And guitars, yeah. We don't pay artists, it's all about exposure.
Yeah, I feel very exposed. That's the payment, right?
Yeah, yeah. No. Leonie could afford food, but he just decides that he doesn't want to eat, so he, he spends his money on guitars instead.
True.
Right, I still have some exposure leftovers from last week, it should last me another couple of days. Nice, yeah. I'm glad to hear that, I was, I was worried.
One thing that I don't use too much is this merge tool. But it's, it's a very interesting tool. For example, I'm gonna merge this.
Hmm.
Corner of this shadow here. Something that I don't do often, but creates a nice effect.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ignore the fact that you're using a different brush, okay?
Yeah, I just forgot, Jayden.
It's just not good enough. It's just not, it's just not good enough.
Something is wrong, right?
Yeah.
I'm weak, I cannot only use the Jayden brush.
Only a true master, only a true master can only use the Jayden brush.
True.
Oh, that just reminded me, there's this, there's this video that. Me and, me and Katie, um, who, those of you who don't know, Katie works on the production team over uh here at Moon Colony and. There's a video that we both love and you might have already seen it. Uh, it's this like potion seller. It's this like potion seller video and it's just so good. Um, this guy has like a filter on, uh, this guy has like a filter on his face, so when he's. Stood in certain positions, it like changes the way his face shape is. And it's just him having a conversation with himself, playing two characters. One is like a, a knight. Who wants to buy like the most powerful potion. And the other character that he's playing is just the potion seller. And the whole video is just him being like, I want to buy your strongest potion. And then, you cannot handle my strongest potion, for therefore the strongest men and you're of the weakest. And it just breaks down and he starts like cry laughing. It's just ridiculous. If you haven't seen it. Um, if you haven't seen it, you go, you need to watch it. It's absolutely iconic. I think the first time I watched it, I was like cry laughing.
The, the thing about videos like that is like, you, you find it super funny. And like when you send to someone, the person is like, what the hell, what is this? Like.
Yeah.
Why is this funny? And like you're dying.
Yeah.
Uh, laughing and the person is serious.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're there like, it's even worse when you're like sat next to them and you're like, hey man, watch like, watch this video. And you're just waiting for them to laugh and you're like looking at them and they're not laughing and you're like. Oh, oh no, this is not good.
What's the matter? Like, what's your problem?
Yeah. Yeah.
You don't like fun? What the hell?
Yeah. Oh, thanks Raymond Blast, I appreciate that. They said, uh, they said, I wish you much success, Jayden, Leonie will never be the same without you.
Truly, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's true. As I said, I'll still be, I'll still be around here and there. Uh, I will just not be, uh, I will just not be, be. Working for Moon Colony. I still will here until the twenty eighth though. Um, and as I said, I, maybe in my last week or something, I'll, I'll try and do like a. Like a community, like draw together thing on magma, like we've done before. It's like a.
Yes, let's, guys, let's do Draw Jayden in your style, please. The last stream will be all about drawing Jade.
Yeah, yeah. Um.
I need more little Jayden uh comic strips, actually.
Oh god, yeah, from Leo. Yeah. Yeah, you wanna do that? We can, we can do that if people want. Just make your own stream, Jayden. I, I would, I don't know if I'll have time. Don't know if I'll have time. I'm currently, I'm currently looking for, currently looking for, for a new job, so. Maybe, maybe if I get a new job and I have the time, I'll sort out, sort out my own streams. Uh, we'll see. Um. Jayden's leaving Moon Colony. Yeah, we put an announcement on the Discord the other day. Uh, I put a post out on LinkedIn this morning. Um, again, I'm here until like the twenty eighth. It's, it's all good, it's all good. Um. Didn't the guy that made the potion seller video go on to write the movie challenges, an absolute icon? Yeah, and I think he's married to. Um. Uh, what was it? Uh. Yeah, he's married to someone called uh Celine Song, who.
Celine Dion.
Celine Dion, he's married to Celine Dion. No, but he, he went on to marry Celine Song, who did like, I think a bunch of like Broadway stuff. I did this deep dive a few months ago. Uh. Is there an official channel we can protest this on? No, no, no. Don't need to protest anything, it's all good, it's all good. Uh. Uh. The brush made by Leonie with Jayden's face will be worth a lot of money now. Yeah. Yeah.
Hey guys, I, I already said that you can go and on Jayden's Instagram, just grab a photo of him and do your own brush.
Dude, we, we have a chance, we have a chance to make loads of money on this, okay? Uh, yeah, if you want, if you want the Leonie brush, you have to PayPal me. Thirty pounds.
To, like, to participate in a chance to win the brush, you know? That's, that's how we do it, Jayden.
Okay, yeah, yeah. You pay me, yeah, if you pay me fifty pounds, you have a chance to win the brush, okay?
Yeah, and like, you can pay as much as you want and like, you, you will increase your chances.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Come on, Jayden, it's capitalism, you have to.
It's, it's true.
Know how to play this game.
That's true, damn. I'm so glad I have you as my financial advisor. Uh, hopefully Kickstarter, so we can fund your dream of visiting Argentina. Um. Yeah, yeah, uh. Yeah, how much of flights to Argentina? Let's, I'm gonna find out. Uh, let's do
Argentina is becoming expensive for some random reason.
It would cost me about twelve hundred pounds.
Basically free then.
Yeah, it's basically free, yeah. Should we start a petition to force Jayden to apply for the part-time Discord mod? Ah, guys, I, I, unfortunately, I, I can't, I can't do that. I, I appreciate that you are very passionate though, thank you. It means a lot. Your name in Argentina would be Juanito, because we don't have Jayden.
Yeah, actually it's Juan Paredes, that's already established. If guys don't know it, but his name is Juan Paredes.
Yeah, I'd fit right in. My level of, my le, my level of, uh, Spanish is really good. Wouldn't Juanito just be like Little Juan?
Yes. You're just Juan Paredes, Jayden.
I'm just, I'm just Juan Paredes. It's a fun, it's a fun name to say, I'll take it.
Yeah.
Uh, Jayden is the main reason I'm tuning into these streams, to be honest, it won't be the same without you. Thank you so much, that's really kind.
Me too, because Jayden invites me.
Yeah. Yeah, every artist at Moon Colony says the same thing. No, I do, I do appreciate it, thank you so much. I've had a lot of, I've had a lot of kind words since both this, well, throughout the week, um, and also this morning. I got some really, some really nice words, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I wish I was good with kind words. I, I'm, my, the way I uh, express myself is with brushes.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that, you know, you know that Leoni likes you if you're part of his brush collection.
True. Yeah, I will never paint a portrait, like, like a painting with someone's face that I don't like.
Okay, now I understand, Leoni, Leoni will host the streams and Jayden will draw now? Yeah, yeah.
Yes, let's do this.
Yeah.
If I can keep my salary doing Jayden's work, I can do that.
Hey man, I, they might give it to you if you ask.
No, dude. But, uh, yeah, I don't want to lose my salary, that's it.
Uh, uh, okay, okay. But what if you, what if you did my job as a bonus? Like, as like, you get paid the same, but you do my work too?
It's fine.
Yeah, there we go.
And I will invite you every week, Jayden.
Just be like the, the worst artist that, that we've ever had on the stream. Today, I'm gonna draw a stick man, and it's gonna take me two hours.
No, no, you have to draw your Pikachu, Jayden. You're a master at it.
That is true, that is true. I think I still have that hit, that here somewhere.
Can show
I'll, I'll show.
How to draw a Pikachu.
That's, that is true.
He did one on stream one time.
He did, yeah.
It's like, yeah, compared to yours, that one is
It's not very, yeah, yeah, it's not very good at all. Here, ah, here it is.
You're the true Pikachu master.
Uh, how am I gonna show this? Sure. I also found, I just opened my note, I opened my notebook and there were like a bunch of Moon Colony stickers in here, so I'll have to find some of those. There you go, I've got it in my notebook, there it is. That's the, that's the Pikachu that I drew. This is, this was, I think that was drawn within my, my first month working at Moon Colony, was drawing this thing. Look how cursed it is. It's like, it's like
It's perfect.
It's so dead inside. You know when like a, you know when like a Ditto, a Ditto turns into, turns into a Pokémon and it kinda just has that, that dead inside look? Yeah, I had to add this arm because, uh, I forgot. I forgot that it existed, so I had to add it after the fact. I don't think I have any other drawings in here. I think I literally just did that one and then was like, "I'm good enough, I don't need to work."
So like you have a, a regular sketchbook, like online sketchbooks are the same.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, first page is, is has something and nothing else.
I love that the further away arm is bigger. Yeah, that's how anatomy works. That's how perspective works. Don't, don't let anyone tell you otherwise.
Yeah, this is for shortening.
Yeah.
Have you heard of it?
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, yeah. God, you guys, I'm starting to think you guys don't understand.
Follow Jayden for more tips.
Yeah, I'm starting to think that you guys don't understand how, how art, how art works. How anatomy works.
True.
Um, it's cute, he looks like he has a great personality. He doesn't. His personality is, his personality is actually worse than, than the way he looks, which is, which is the scary thing. Every day, every day I'll do a stream where I draw a single Pokémon. It'll be like a, it'll be like a ten minute stream, and then I'll, then that's it for the whole day.
I like that.
Yeah.
People love series, so you can do
Yeah.
Something like that. Okay, I'll draw a Pokémon every day for a hundred and fifty days.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
This can work.
Yeah. And by the end of it, I'll have a whole army of really cursed looking Pokémon, and it'll be fantastic. Uh, I'd watch that, though I reckon you might need an hour for most Pokémon. That sounds like a challenge. Uh, I'm pretty sure I could draw any Pokémon in ten minutes. I could probably do that in five. Uh, he doesn't wait to disrespect your curse, son. Thanks. You ignored my advice that you didn't ask for? Did I? Ah! Uh, "Just do one art stream a day featuring random community artists that you like. I'd come sometime." Yeah? That's not a bad idea. "It might take you an hour to make them recognizable." How, how rude. How, did you, did you not see my Pikachu? That, that Pikachu took me like thirty seconds, and that was already recognizable. There are some Pokémon that are just literally a bunch of keys on a keyring. That would take, I could do that in like a minute.
Have you tried to draw keys on a keyring?
No.
This is not easy, Jayden. Because you have, uh, circles.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Have to do ellipses.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. But that's assuming that I'm trying to draw them well. "Any rookie can draw a Pikachu, do a Charizard next. I'd like to see you draw a Voltorb or some Sphere Pokémon in freehand in ten minutes." Bet, I'll do it.
Yeah, like, I, I will draw Jayden's, uh, electrode will be like this, his circle like this. And there's the shadow plane here.
Yeah, that's, that's not far off. That's not, that's not far off what I would do at all, actually. This is just a bank robber. Now he's got a beard. Now he just looks like a guy with a beard.
Come on, Jayden, you don't understand, understand Pokémon.
Yeah, I know it's the red, it's, it's, electrode is red and white. Oh, yeah, that's good. See? That's perfect. If you, if you showed that to somebody and asked what Pokémon that was, I bet, like, I bet at least ninety percent of people would get it, would get it. Did you, did you draw on the wrong layer?
I, I drew on the, the, the actual painting layer. Okay, I, I haven't had enough contraze.
Yeah, that was, that was lucky. Do Dragonite, that's my favorite. Uh, it's just a bank robber and a creepy smile, bearded ghastly, yeah. Genius, genius.
You could do a stream that is like that, uh, you start drawing a Pokémon, and when people say, "Okay, this is Electro," you say, "No, no, it's actually a bearded ghastly," and you complete the illustration to show that it's not what people thought, you know?
Yeah, genius. Man. Too many good ideas. That would be so fun. Yeah. If I, if I, if I get, if I get the time, and, uh, if I get the time and don't, uh, and feel like making a fool of myself, then I'll, then I'll do it.
Yeah, you're ready to do that every week.
Thanks, man.
Here with us.
Yeah, thanks dude, I appreciate that.
I encourage you to continue.
Yeah. Uh, "Draw the Pokémon until the first person guesses correctly." Yeah, it's like Pictionary but with Pokémon.
One, uh, uh, thing that we did a couple of times, which is fun, is, uh, I'll describe you a Pokémon and you have to draw it without knowing what it is.
That was so difficult. Even describing them can be really hard sometimes, though.
Yeah, and the thing is, it's not like, ah, you cannot describe it like this, oh, it's a Pokeball with a face. Okay, this is kinda stupid.
It has to be shaped.
You have to like, yeah, you can, you need to throw the people off a little bit, you know? So they don't know exactly what you're describing.
Yeah. Uh, Alex said, "Just don't take"
Pretty happy with this.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, it looks good, man.
That's the good thing about doing just one during the stream.
Yeah, you can take, you can take a lot more time.
Make it look good.
Yeah. Uh, Alex said, "Just don't take too much time, social media is not like real people, everyone will forget you." Thanks, Alex. Yeah, I needed that, man.
True, that's true. Yeah, because, yeah, after two weeks, no one will remember you.
Yeah, it's true. Uh,
Yeah.
Oh, thank you for the sub, Gabriel Fritas. Thank you very much. Um, "Jayden will now become a bodybuilder and then sell photos of his muscles for artists to learn." Man, that, that is, that is, that's officially the, the, I don't know, the most out there take of what I'm gonna go on to do. That's why he shaved his head. "I'll remember you for at least another six months." Thank you, thanks. That's, that's, like, that's an appropriate, that's an appropriate amount of time, I think. That's good.
Yeah, I, uh, I have to admit that I'm a pretty terrible friend.
Don't, don't remind me too.
For me, it's, it's easy to just like move forward and, and don't contact peoples. Like, I have a bunch of friend, friends that I haven't speak for like years. But it's like, if we met each other again, it, I will be like, only one week past and it'll be normal for me, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not very good with hellos and goodbyes, actually.
Well, it's difficult, it's, it's difficult. I mean, especially when like, every, like, everyone is so, is so busy now, that like, it is difficult to just take time to, to check in on people.
Yeah.
Um, I, I struggle with that quite a lot too, so.
It's like, I, I don't know about you guys, but where was the last time you received a message from someone? That is not like, "Hey, uh, can you help me with this or that?" Or
Yeah.
The person was just saying something like, "Uh, hi, how are you? I just wanna know if you're well or whatever." It's like, it's something that doesn't happen very often, at least with me, you know? But I don't blame other people because I also don't do that.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly.
It's fine.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's just, I think it's just important to understand that, like, although people don't message you very often or whatever, it doesn't mean that, like, uh, it doesn't mean that they don't care, it just, everyone is so busy, like, looking after themselves, that it, it takes a lot, it takes a lot to, to, to look out, to look out for other people as well as yourself. Oh, that, now it looks perfect. Now it looks really good, dude.
I'm gonna apply a simple trick to make it look more cinematic.
Ooh, nice.
I'll just add noise into a fifty percent gray image. So it's just like a noise layer, and I add this in a overlay. So it's like, it's noisy now, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, one thing that I can do also, it's like removing the noise from the lit part a little bit, and like concentrate the noise on the shadow parts. I don't know, it's just, uh, something to make it look kinda cinematic. One thing that I like to do also, it's not like the, the original frame has it, but it's like playing around with the displacement of the channels.
Yeah.
Like this, you know? Like creating color aberrations. So I'm just creating a mask now, and I will erase these lines on the, the edges. So like, if you see like this, this is the part where I removed the, the effect from the mask, and also I'll remove a little bit on the vocal parts.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's like, will be something that is affecting more of the edges and like the background. So if I group this effect and turn on and off, you can see what it's doing with the background.
Yeah.
Okay, guys, that's it. That's the end. Okay, let's do one thing that I like to do at the end, which is just place the original on top and see how far off I was. Okay, so this is the original, and this is the study. Yeah, composition wise is completely off. But I will say that at least I did not make the head bigger than it needed to be.
Yeah, that's true. If anything, it's a bit smaller, but it still fits within the
Yeah, I will
Still looks fine.
So I, I can fix it if I just, for example, get this part of the image and scale up like this. Let me just do it. Let me just do it real quick. Here, this is more like. This. Yeah, so it's like way closer. I was just, uh, too far to the left side.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also the contrast is a little. Bigger, so like if I do this to the shadows. And erase this from the lights, so like the shadows are darker probably. Yeah, and also the color temperature. It's not as red. It's like. More green-ish in a way. A little bit more. Not everywhere, but. Yeah, in the midtones. The midtones are a little bit towards green, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Like this is what I would fix, you know?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Very close, very close. Looks like she's waving.
And also, the highlights are also brighter. Like the bright parts are, can be brighter. But one thing that I do usually when I'm doing this, I, I like to be closer to the center of the values. Not too much like in the, uh, extremes, because it's easier for us to like. Brighten the image on the highlights, for example, than is to like get something that is already clipping, is already full white and. Pull, pulling it back, you know, it's kinda hard. So it's better, like if you have room to bump up the contrast, for example. So I can just brighten the screen, the, the image like this. Remove it with this. And then just. Tony it down a little bit. Yeah. Okay, it's closer now.
Yeah.
It's good enough.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, it's never gonna be, it's never gonna be one hundred percent. One hundred percent accurate, so, uh, I think that's good. I mean, especially for two hours, you know, a, as always. But yeah, I think that's gonna probably do it for today. Um, if you've been following along with us and decided to take part yourself, I can see that. Someone has already done so. Uh, they've posted their thing in the study room. Their name's Bagley. Thank you very much for taking part. It looks really cool. I can see you stylized it a lot more. It looks great. But if you've been following along, post it in the study room or Discord. I'd love to see it. And, uh, again, thank you everybody for, for all of the, the, the kind words today. I really appreciate it. You know, it's been, it's been great doing these streams for the past two years. Um, I've still got another. One or, or maybe two coming up, but, uh, I'll make sure that we, we get a community, a community, uh, drawing stream in there at some point before I leave. Thanks again as well to Leoni. Uh, it's, I, I don't know if we'll have another one together, but, uh, if not, it's been a pleasure for the last two years. Yeah, I think you were one of the, one of the first artists that we had on. And so it's only fitting for you to be one of the last ones that I'm, at least I'm, uh, hosting with, so. Uh, it's been, it's been wonderful.
Invite me for the next one, Jayden.
Yeah.
I don't want this to be our last.
Okay, alright, alright. You can come, you can come along for, for the, for the community one. I'll make sure. We'll see if we can get, get some people for that. That'll be good. But great, thank you so much, everybody, for watching. Uh, I'll, I'll close it off here. I don't wanna ramble on for too long. And I'll set something up for next week. Keep an eye on the Discord. Uh, it will be in the events tab when I do it. I'll get it sorted by the end of the week. But yeah, thanks so much, everybody. Have a wonderful rest of your week, uh, and a brilliant weekend. And I'll see you later. Bye bye, everybody.
Thank you. Bye bye.